Guys, I'm gonna uh call the public hearing to order regarding the approval of cable television agreement between Spectrum Northeast LLC and the town of Hillsdale. Uh the agreement is available online. Uh this is um required to extend the agreement. So uh any members of the public would like to speak to this issue?
This one can I don't know if you should.
I'm sorry.
If I thought I could make a statement about something else.
Oh, sure. This is that'll be at the public hearing. Sure. But you will definitely have your chance. Uh this is just strictly for the uh cable agreement. So um Mr. Briggs, do you like your cable service? Do you like your cable?
Is it a public hearing now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, so I'm soliciting comment from the public, but uh is it Pat? No, what's your name? Pat, she's here for another matter, so she'll speak at the public uh uh comments section. Uh and I don't think Bart and Nico have anything to say, so um you do have to keep this open for fifteen minutes, so uh just please bear in mind we are being recorded, so I'm totally free to talk amongst yourselves, but this will be recorded.
Did um was this on the board's agenda, Heather? Was it on our last agenda?
Uh no, it was it was called uh in between. We got this um notice of this right after the October meeting, so I emailed everybody, put it in the paper, and put it on the website.
Yeah, um but the the board needs to call a public hearing. So like the supervisor, you you can't call a public hearing, your board needs to review it and call a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, you need a board calls a public hearing, not you you can't have an individual member call a public hearing. I'm pretty sure. I mean, as a board, we haven't reviewed this. That's why I was confused. I thought we're like going to review it as a board and then I don't know.
Well, if you mailed it out, why wouldn't we?
It must be announced within seventy-two hours in advance. A New York State Board calls a public hearing by issuing a public notice that it takes the daytime in hearing along with the matters to be considered, so.
Yeah, it's for sure. It's that the board has to call it.
Well, we could do it uh before our December meeting. Hey, uh quick fact, Jenny. So uh we got our the franchise agreement after the October board meeting. I emailed the board and said we would have a public meeting, which was put in the paper and on the website and on uh due notice. Uh we have a question whether the board actually has all that public meeting or whether that will suffice. The question is whether the board has to mean to call the public hearing or can the board be notified that there will be a public hearing and then notice price can we have the public hearing started? Yeah, that's what you've never shown up before. Have a specific meeting to call a public meeting.
Boards definitely need to call public hearings, but.
Yeah, but we did via email. When I informed you, no one said anything. If this was to be an issue, it should have been brought up as an email to send to repeat this event.
I think that this has happened to the board and I may have raised this issue, I'm not sure. But I'm not trying to.
I know, I know, but.
I just, I'm pretty sure that a board
Right.
needs to call in a public forum, in a meeting, to make a decision to a motion to call a public hearing. That's, I believe, so if anyone says otherwise, then we listen to the attorney, but.
Confused here, but the board has to make a motion to call a public hearing?
Why should it has to be noted?
I'm here on speaker. Oh, sorry.
You know, I don't know of any specific provision to that effect. I mean, what the laws say is that there has to be a public hearing and they have to be noticed, you know, in certain ways um. You know, the point of that is to make sure the public is aware that it's happening. I don't know if there's anything in particular.
I think there might be.
I mean, we need to make motions for simple decisions.
In general, the concern about these things is that everybody who may have an interest in participating has, you know, is given a legal notice, the public notice in the paper and such that it's happening so that they don't.
Right, but we've made a legal notice, so we can make the notices has been totally been posted and done via the law, so we can make a motion right now to call a public hearing. Is that what you're saying or?
Well, we're not in a meeting. Rather, we're not.
Okay, so I I make a motion. Yeah, I know, it sounds like the 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 notice has uh requirement has been fulfilled. Uh so now we have to pass a motion to call a public hearing. Is this or are you saying we should have called it and then done the notice?
Yeah, I think it takes a board to decide whether a public hearing is called. That's that's I'm not concerned whether like, I'm not concerned about the notification. I just have noticed it's happened before where a public hearing is called, but the board has not called the meeting and we've also not had the chance to review the actual subject of the public hearing in a public.
Well, that's not true because I did send uh fully notice emailed the board three weeks ago.
In a public forum.
But that's what we're doing now. We're in the public.
This is a public here, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
No, a public meeting. You've called the public meeting.
There's everything in here about. Was an agenda. Something about the town board.
Mine seems to me that if you know if if the people are aware that it was publicly noticed in the newspaper and the website in advance and all of that, things were found, that that I don't think that I don't think that this public hearing would be invalidated.
So can I get a motion to call the public hearing to order? Erwin?
I just I don't know anything. You know, this kind of came out of the blue. I don't know any particular, I I you know, it's possible to something out there, but I it it seems to me that the legal requirements are that you know, the public is on notice so that they can come in and participate and I don't know of any specific mandate on how it gets scheduled.
I think there's a time element here too. I mean, this literally came in a few days after our October board meeting. So I definitely would put on the agenda had it arrived in time, but.
I mean, as a supervisor, you can call meetings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a public hearing, I guess.
No, there's nothing in the there's nothing in the town law manual that says that the town board needs to um create a public hearing. Nothing. It says that you have to, you have to notify the public that there's a public hearing and put it in the newspaper.
It seems to me that as a supervisor, if you can call a meeting in the board, that you can call a public hearing with, you know, is is one that's publicly noticing, where he's unaware of it, that um there's no real, I don't see any basis really to say it's invalid. Normally, normally they are just done in discussion, we have a public hearing and they are, I wouldn't usually done by motion, but I don't know that like you don't have to have a town board, you don't have to have a town board meeting to call the next town board meeting. Um so you can just call it. So I would think that the same thing would apply here. I mean, I can look at it, but I don't. It seems to me that those are analogous and as long as the notice is done. I mean, that's the key thing is that you can't, you can't do the ultimate you can't adopt the ultimate thing, in this case, the agreement without a public hearing. And the point is to make sure the public has their opportunity to come in and weigh in on it. So I I don't think that the procedural step of scheduling is that big an issue.
Okay.
That's that's what I mean. I can't be a hundred percent sure of that, but.
Public hearing has been variously discussed and defined as follows. A statutory direction, a notice of public hearing be published means that a fairing and partial hearing be held pursuant to such notice and all interested parties attending the hearing be accorded the opportunity to be heard. Um they have the right to appear.
Yeah, that seems to me to be the.
Yeah, that is, there's nothing in here that says the town board needs to pass a motion and we've never passed a motion for a public hearing.
I think moving forward, it's it's in our best interest to make sure that the board actually reviews.
Okay.
Publicly reviews whatever is being submitted to a public hearing because the public wants to see what we.
But we will be doing that with.
Right, but they want the opportunity to comment after we discuss something. Or how, right? That's it.
Okay.
Any issue with that. I just think we should, we should, we should make maybe uh uh maybe not a formal policy, but that that's.
Okay, I I.
With planning boards, you don't have a a a public hearing of a site plan or a final site plan is reviewed by the public, right? So it's just.
Yeah, because well, because you know, a planning board is on a board. The board accepts, looks at the application, they have to review it and determine that they have a complete application. Um I mean, they wouldn't normally call, decide to have a public hearing until they've reviewed it and as a group decided they have a complete application. Um sometimes that's wrong, you know, you just keep it, you know, they keep it open or whatever, but uh.
Right.
I know we have I have seen other cases where because of scheduling or some sort of uncertainty, you know, um you know, there there was sort of an interim decision, you know, where it's left in the hand of the chair or somebody to say, you know, we need to do this, whatever. There's some reason why actually, I think what we've done at times is uh I think I've seen it happen towards that I work with. Let's say somebody comes into the zoning board or a planning board with an application and it's almost complete, but they need one more significant piece of, one more thing. And in order to, so if they can get it in at least ten days ahead, that you know, and with the finding boards, they, you know, the public hearing department were set on the same night as the regular meeting. So it's like, okay, we'll have a meeting coming up. You know, let's say a public planning board, we got a meeting coming up on the first Thursday of next month. Um they came in, they presented, it's missing one thing. So we can't have the public hearing with an incomplete thing. If we can get that in, if you can get it to us ten days ahead, we'll send out the notice. And so it's sometimes they're that contingent. It's like, well, we don't know if we're gonna have it or not because it depends on when to get the thing in. But if they do, then the chair says, well, fine, they've got it. We're gonna have the public hearing. So I mean, it's not formally adopted by the group. It's like it's it's contingent on whether stuff comes in or not. And so you know, there's been some informality about those and I don't think there's any problem with with that as long as, because the key thing is complying with the statutory or the code requirements to get the notice in the newspaper, get the letters out to the budding people and as long as you've done all that. You know, how that decision was intended to schedule that night or push it out another month, I don't think really there is much delay.
Okay. All right, Ken. Thank you.
Again, I mean, I I can try to look at it, but I think that that's the key thing is even if it's really nearly about make sure the public is aware that this is going on. They come in, they have time, they notice, come in.
Okay, I appreciate it. It's seven o'clock, we're gonna start our regular meeting, but uh stick around.
I'm always opposed to public.
Okay, uh can I get a second? Go on, favor. Okay, Ken, I might call you later, but hopefully not. Uh thank you for your sage advice, uh whatever. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call to meet uh order the town board meeting of November twenty twenty-five. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to equal with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you and thank you all for being here. Now it's our public comment and would any member of the public like to have any comments?
Yes, I have a statement or I have a request.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just gonna read it. Is that okay? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so my name is Patty Ackerman. I've been a resident here in um Hillsdale for twenty-seven years. I'm here to ask the board's advice on how to handle the increased gunfire and hunting in the vicinity of our farm on Pumpkin Hill Road. Historically, this area had more open space than it does now. It's become much more residential. The hunting has increased dramatically this year. The shots come from the east and the west primarily, but this year the west toward Broadman Road has been loud and frequent. Our house, barn, and livestock are in a hollow, which used to be the safest place for them, but it's now encircled by shooting on three out of four sides. A person who hunts suggested to me that my livestock is not safe. The DEC local encon told me that horses and cows have been killed by hunters in this area. I do not know who the hunters are, what they're shooting with, and the direction they are facing. I don't know if they've taken the required hunter safety course offered by the DEC. I only know that when speaking with the DEC encons in regards to this matter and studying the DEC website under hunting regulations, the document Avoiding Conflict Between Hunters and Property Owners states in the section on Hunter Responsibilities that hunters also must show ethical and courteous behavior to local residents. Consider contacting landowners adjacent to where you will be hunting well in advance of your hunt. Let them know when and where you will be hunting. Take the time to explain to the landowner your intent to abide by the laws and regulations pertaining to hunting and familiarity, your familiarity with the location of houses and your desire to be safe, and then plan out your shooting directions and verify the spot you choose to hunt is safe and in compliance with the law. And then identify, lastly, any concerns that the landowner may have and discuss them in the way you go hunting. So in conclusion, I would like to ask the town board if you would create a registry of hunters and to organize a dialogue with landowners within the firing ranges of their weapons, as per the DEC's recommendations, so that hunters know their neighbors and the neighbors feel safe from the hunters, which is not now the case. There should be more patrols by law enforcement also during hunting season and increase public knowledge for public safety. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that research. First of all, are there any other comments in the public?
And I just backtrack to the end of the public hearing. Are you now thinking the board needs to vote on this?
We'll discuss that at the moment.
Is there any response to this or it's just like?
Uh technically, there's not responsive. I think our John Clark has done some research on this.
We can respond.
We can, yeah, yeah.
Response because we we deal with poachers in this, I mean, poachers, if you're if you're speaking about illegal poaching uh hunting, or are you speaking about?
I'm I'm speaking about um people right around my property who are just shooting whatever they want, whatever they want. Like the other day, the first day of hunting season, the first shot was so loud that my old horse fell. And I had to talk to the vet. I mean, I don't wanna go into my personal thing, but it's definitely like if I could just be in touch with, like I am gonna go and knock on their doors and try and talk to them. I have called people today. I've called like three or four people today and there are at least six of us who have houses. One, one, my next door neighbor doesn't, if they leave town, because they were the ones that the hunter shot into his bathroom after he left in the morning and we.
He's shot about a fine from DEC for that.
Well, we we caught him.
The sheriff.
Yeah.
I mean, uh.
They're they're allowed to shoot between sunrise to sunset.
I know all that stuff.
Yeah, so 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 if you're talking about poaching, then contact the DEC. I mean, they're very active in this area. They 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 do show up and they won't take it.
No, I'm talking about having relationships with the hunters who are in my neighborhood and.
Do you know if they're hunting legally on someone's land with?
Very high submissions by the property owner to be hunting on that land.
Well, what I need to do is I need to go around and I need some help, honestly, if anyone's available.
I've only sold three hunting licenses this year.
What?
I've only sold three hunting licenses this year and they were out of state.
Do you need help with finding out who the owners are for this property?
Think that I'm gonna make, I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna go feed them, talk to them, I'm gonna send a letter.
I would suggest a letter first.
What you're doing, you know, I have resources, I have these other animals that want to be sure you're not going to shoot them. And so I'll send those out and then we'll try to comply with this um DEC document where it says they should talk to you, you should talk to them, or they should really reach out to you if they're hunting. Like I know my back field where I have the animals now. My neighbor wanted me to move them and I thought, why do you want me to move them? They're on the road then. They're more vulnerable, you know, to, we have to have drive-by shootings and hunting, people hunting for cars.
Which is highly illegal.
Yeah.
But but I realized also, he didn't want the animals there because he used to to shoot in that direction. And so now he can't shoot in this area. So I I wanna just.
Do you ask for help or are you, I'm trying, I would like to help you. Do you need
Thanks.
logistical help in looking at your land and seeing the parcels that surround and you've already said, okay, great. Okay, so you got that. That's the first step. And it sounds like your next step is a letter to the owners or?
You?
No, the net for for you to write the owners, introducing yourself, saying, can we meet? Can we talk? I have concerns.
That's that's what I might need a little support, maybe in terms of sitting down and meeting with them and getting the information. I mean, they actually, one of the far neighbor actually uh you know, showed me where his target was and his wife came out and said we have to move the target because the target was facing right toward our land, my land, right? So it's been an ongoing issue, but this year when that first shot hit and everybody just completely fell apart, I just thought this can't, this like what is it about about just random people shooting guns all around me? Like how is that okay?
Well, again, I think one of your first steps is to ask your neighbors if they have given permission to people to hunt on their property. That's a big thing around here. Some people even rent their land to have people hunt on their property. So if somebody is coming on a property without permission, if you, if the next door neighbor says, I haven't given anybody permission, then I think you could call the sheriff. Probably say this is trespassing.
Well, that's a one phase, you know, and the other case, it's the actual neighbor doing the shooting.
Is it a farmer who's protecting his cows from coyotes or is it a farmer protecting his stock from coyotes? What is that person growing or what do they have on their property?
That's right, yeah.
What do they have?
That's the whole point.
Okay, so you you have some more research to do.
Where the target is, I don't know if the target or if it's a hunter. We've had any number of sort of kill shots, one shots, which I'm told is when they actually killed the deer. So we're just looking for data so that we feel safe, you know, we're not telling people.
So I guess my question is, are your budding neighbors any livestock farmers?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
No, there there are one and two acre lots on Broadman where the shooting is coming from, and then there's a lot of backwoods hundreds of acres behind, you know.
Okay, well, I I agree with Steve that your first step is to see if these people are hunting with the owner's permission. Uh then it's kind of a two-pronged process after that, whether they have permission or whether they don't and we can.
Yeah, but sometimes honestly, it's too dangerous to do that. I have had situations with neighbors where it's actually too dangerous to even enter there.
Right, that's why.
Yeah, I would.
Obviously, obviously, we have so many issues with this. You you have to call a D, the DC because I mean, they don't need a warrant. They don't need a warrant.
So that would the sheriff, the deputy was.
Not the county sheriff. You call the D, the DC officer.
I talked to G two, yes, I talked to two, yeah, the local guy and the and the region three guy. So I I'm gonna pursue it just because of the absolute safety and I hope maybe I don't know. I mean, I know I talked to Tina Sharp today. I don't know if you know her. You must know her. I talked to Tina Sharp today and she, you know, has had, you know, bad experiences also. So, you know, I just would like us to have a resolution where we can coexist, you know.
And people, uh you know, they're coming up from New York City, let's just say, and they get a hunting license from the state anywhere. It it's not like they're registered in Hillsdale to hunt.
That's the thing, right?
So we, you know.
Is there any registration involved for hunters?
Um you absolutely do. You have to provide.
State.
So you're from the state. I do the DC, so I'll make it. So you have to either have had a permit and you have to show me your permit from the year before, and if you don't, then you have to show your certification of your hunter safety course.
Can I give you on time?
I'm the deputy clerk at hillsamy.com. I'm downstairs. But again, I.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in. Thank you for doing that legwork. Uh please keep us posted. I hope we were able to provide some advice.
You get it online. Everything's done online.
Good to see you. Okay, um hearing, no further public comments. Uh we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt the October twenty, Erwin? Thank you a second. Uh any uh mo, yeah, and comment?
Uh this was the one I just had, it it says abstain, fell. Did you actually abstain?
He wasn't, he was at the meeting.
Yes, because I wasn't here and I was dealing with the debt.
Yeah, yeah.
But then he's absent, he's.
Then he wasn't for that meeting before, so that's why he abstained, because he wasn't there for the meeting before.
Oh, he abstained from the approval of the minutes. Yeah, uh yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah. All in favor? Uh unanimous. Thank you. Uh on to the special town board meeting. Motion to accept October twenty-eighth. Miss Erwin, thank you a second, Steve. Uh any comments? Motion to approve. Unanimous, thank you. And then uh for the public hearing um on October twenty-eighth, can I get a motion to accept the minutes? Steve and Erwin. Thank you for being us, for doing all these.
Like six in a month.
Yes, well, I'm walking the budget season. All in favor? Uh unanimous. Thank you. Okay, uh on to the county. Uh, unanimous, thank you. Okay, uh, onto the county report. We did get, uh. Word that our mortgage tax distribution this year was close to forty thousand dollars, which I believe is in far with, uh. The. Previous years. Uh, the uh CEO of Columbia Memorial did come in to talk to the board of supervisors. Obviously, they're in distress. I mean, they, she talked, um. Uh, the 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 situation is they are going for a new classification of a rural hospital which involves less. Beds, which sounds like a reduction and it is. However, it will streamline the hospital, open them up for more state assistance. According to her, a lot of these beds were not um occupied anyway, uh, because Columbia Memorial just.
And they're moving the ambulatory to Nats.
Yeah. Yeah. And they've got a a grant for uh mental health. There will be more beds added for that aspect. You know, it's it's trying times and it's all bigger part of a larger national picture, obviously. Um. Uh, they, she's going to continue to talk to the board of supervisors, uh, which. The our meetings are the second Wednesdays of the month if you, that it is open to the public. Um, so I just want to give everyone an update on that. Thank you.
What what is the, sorry, I mean, what is the status of the hospital?
Well, they're they're they have one designation and I meant to look this up, but they're going essentially. Downgrading their designation to a a rural hospital. I forget the exact terms, but instead of being essentially a full service. They're going to.
Niche.
Niche streamline their procedures, get a new designation. Which will allow them to to have increased state funding as this new designation. So it was a necessary move. There's.
So you're getting rid of all the M R Is and all that's gone.
Yeah, 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 that's uh. Uh, yeah. Right, so it's. It was a necessary move to make. They really had no choice.
It but so no emergency care for?
Yeah, you know, they do the the E R, but uh cases, they're trying to move. The she said there was one patient who's been there for two hundred ninety seven days, so they're trying to streamline that process of. Getting other facilities for long-term patients to cut those costs. Also, if um an emergency situation does require more extensive care, more than four days, they would be transferred to Albany. So um there are certain cost-cutting necessary measures that they're hoping to make. I'm not the biggest expert on this. I'm coming into this. Uh, but um there was a good article in the Columbia paper two weeks ago by Denver Lands.
It makes sense. I was scared at first, like.
Yeah, I mean, look, it's it's.
Makes sense.
It's the best possible option they had.
Well, they have so many people coming in from the other side. They're having something on the other side of the river.
There there are, there are a lot of logistical issues with that hospital, but that's through no fault of their own. Yeah.
Is the county looking at alternative forms of emergency transport to major major area hospitals?
Everybody have a helicopter that goes down.
Yeah, I I don't know that. Uh, that's more the A M has.
Like they go to Westchester, they go all over, but sometimes you have to private pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There always an E M T.
Josh was on the board for a while.
You were an A M T just on the fire.
They're looking at all options.
This is the school and the fire station, uh, landing fields.
And Copake has a pad.
Or on the middle of the road.
Right, no, I I mean, how many power reactors are there?
There's a lot.
Uh, I am gonna move on. Uh, we got a lot of stuff to get through tonight. Our October financials are posted. We're doing a pretty good job. Uh, keeping them within our budgetary guidelines, uh, but there are a few budget amendments. Uh, I do need to make tonight. Uh, one is that we did get our insurance bill and it did increase significantly. Um. This is, you know, we did get some kind of a warning that this was in the offing. Um. But retirement, sorry, the retirement, yeah, retirement, state retirement. This is totally based on, uh. Uh, state employees throughout the state, nothing we control, so it's very hard to budget for. Also, our contractual line supervisor and um town board are running a little low, but our equipment lines are. Are fine, so uh just so. We don't have to make an emergency budget amendment at the end of the year. I'm going to proactively move some money there or put forward. Thank you. Um, so can I get a motion to approve the? Budget amendment eleven. Tiger, uh, you, any any questions?
Love it, it's loading here.
Okay. Stay. So, yeah, state retirement is. Uh, on there. Okay, thank you all. Town clerk report, Rabina, vote for it.
So, uh, we've been working on the sewer numbers and there's plenty of them. Working on the sewer levy which was submitted to the county. About thirty thousand dollars worth.
Thank you.
Submitted the budget to the county. Haven't heard anything saying it was incorrect or anything, so that's good. Um, recycle stickers are gonna go on sale again December first and they'll be down for the rest of this year plus next year. Um, and then, uh, I have something to ask the village, so I would like to change the procedure for. The use of the town hall and say that we need, if people need to use the town hall, they need to give us. Unless they set up a schedule uh prior to, they need to give us um a written email. At least two weeks prior to the date they're asking for. And if they have to cancel it, then cancel it at least a week prior. Um, because, you know, we arrange for employees and extra hours, which is what happened to the. Uh, meeting that was proposed on November fourteenth, I think. Uh, because Emily Emily's hours are normally ten till two. And you had a meeting that was kind of scheduled for nine till one A A R P.
Yeah, but that was never scheduled, actually scheduled.
I know, but you know, didn't communicate, so it was very difficult to figure.
Yeah, yeah, but that I didn't communicate it because it was never scheduled.
So it'd be nice to just hear if it was or not.
Okay, so nothing will be considered scheduled until it's in writing. Okay, that's totally acceptable.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you. Also, we've begun to, um, you know, uh, look at that sheriff's station. Uh, and scan in stuff that, uh, you know, thanks. So thank you, Emily. We're beginning the great digitification project, very baby steps. But, um, you know, there, Emily has a list of what's required to keep physical copies of, you know, bank statements, uh.
Something that could be forever, other things we'll get rid of in seven.
Yeah, but we're gonna digitize everything.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Great, I bet that it it is becoming a space issue. Uh, highway superintendent's report, Mr. Berg.
So we finished assisting with the sewer district. Uh, I gave you my monthly report. Uh, getting ready for winter. We're mixing sand right now. Uh, I think the guys are cleaning the leaves. From the cobra pipes in some of the ditches. And, um, I did meet with D E C yesterday. On the Mitchell Street Cobra Pipe, that's the one that's five hundred feet off of. Um, twenty-three. Uh, they were actually very interested in meeting, so we are gonna be designing a, you know. A a a pipe. Because there's many different options we can put there. So I have reached out to, um. Uh, a couple of other organizations and we'll see what happens.
So, uh, you're designing it like? Uh, any further? Any further? You said the very interested meeting and then, uh, I just wondered, uh, is this a special pipe for some reason or is it?
So so D E C actually is, uh, you know, there's different options we could put there. Uh, and one of the cheaper ones is an elliptical pipe, which I didn't think that we were gonna be able to.
Okay.
We're gonna be, we're allowed to. So I did email Tracy and, uh, she's looking through some things, so it's a, it's a.
Okay.
And there might be some grants that we can, uh, work on.
Okay.
Not sure, uh.
Yeah, but you'll keep us posted and send us the information. Okay, great, all right.
That that pipe, the box cobra, it's not a pipe, it's a box cobra, definitely needs to be.
Yeah, that's.
Where is that?
It's seventy plus years, the best that anybody can guess. So no, uh, digital or no.
Right there. Right off the twenty-three.
Right.
Yeah.
That one.
So, okay.
Where the garrel is right there by the, uh, my diner little house.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'll keep us posted and and keep us told. Okay.
We'll work on it and see what happens and see if we can get a grant and done.
Great, all right, to be continued. Obviously, this isn't gonna happen before the spring, so. We will.
No, and that's a trap stream, so we can't do it in the dirt. Anyway, June through, we can only do the word June fifteenth through August. Something or other, it's a limited time.
Right. Okay.
Well, we'll see what happens and, uh, see what Tracy has to say.
Who's Tracy?
Tracy Brown from Traveling with the.
Oh, okay, good, nice.
Excellent, thank you. All right, uh, to be continued. Uh, okay, sewer. Okay, uh, kind of a big, uh, let me give you the overall pictures that the, uh, D E Cs. Speaking of which, uh, is very happy with the results. Uh, the affluent looked. Good the other day, better than I've ever seen. Uh, there will be more testing going on, but, uh. Uh, he was on site last Friday, wasn't it? Yeah, or Thursday.
Yeah.
Very recently, he was on site, uh, and did a whole walkthrough with the whole team. And was, uh, highly complimentary of the process, the team. And the willingness to to do this right.
Is that after the, uh?
Better than I've ever seen.
Yeah, this was right before you laid down the, yeah, yeah.
Must see a lot of.
He must see a lot of effluent, yeah, so you know. Uh, so look, uh, we are still, the bills, there's still bills that need to be processed. Uh, I'm, uh, um, you know, we have three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of grant money still yet to be reimbursed. Uh, conceived by the chart here that, uh, we have taken two temporary loans for. Towing one hundred and thirty-five K from the general fund. Obviously, we've got these grants that will make that up. Uh, we are still calculating. It looks like at the end of the day, after almost seven hundred thousand dollars worth of improvement, we will. End up probably twenty to thirty thousand dollars, uh, in the red. Uh, which I know does not sound good, but all things considered, it's amazing. Uh, I'm working on a, um, revenue versus spending and, uh, uh, I didn't have that ready for tonight, but I will. Uh, it looks like we have revenue of a hundred and five K a year. The spending is approximately eighty-five to ninety. Uh, counting in some contingency. I don't see. Anything breaking at this point because it's all new, but I do know there's some work on the generator. Uh, but that's kind of the overall view. Again, I I don't have it tonight because, uh, we're still waiting for these, uh, bills to come in. Uh, that having been said, there is one more, um, upgrade. That, uh, I would take a motion, we can discuss it, uh, to accept the bid from Precision Upkeep LLC. Uh, for the installation of the sewer work set and the installation of a working sink sink, uh, for seventy-two hundred dollars. Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second? Okay, I'll I'll give just background, um. This has been a, uh, initiative that's been on the plate for.
Since it was built.
Since it was built. Uh, uh, for whatever reason, no judgment, it always gets.
Cold in there.
Yeah. We now have new equipment. We now have new fabrics that are cleaned by these sprinklers, sprinklers.
Nozzles.
Nozzles, thank you. Do get clogged with grease, whatever. They do need to be constantly, not constantly, but cleaned on a regular basis in order to. Get the life of the fabrics that we expect since we just, uh, installed the new ones. Uh. This is, uh, been suggested by all of our consultants. Uh, as I said, I know that we will be ending up slightly in the red, but. Okay, I'm not gonna opine anymore. I'll I'll let you opine first, uh, before going on, but those are the basic facts.
We bought ourselves five more years of a working sewer system. Ten?
Yeah.
Maybe more.
I I did, we should have had. We should have had more life, but you know, we didn't do.
So yeah, one of the important things is is because these. They weren't cleaned on a regular basis. Why? You just had to go through this whole process of the seven hundred thousand dollar project.
Exactly.
Because they weren't cleaned on a regular basis and it just dumped everything into the wrong place.
So had they spent five thousand dollars fifteen years ago, we might not have had to go through that, so.
Would it be smarter to look into maybe in the near future to? Put up an appropriate building instead of a couple of sheds?
I can definitely look into that, yeah.
I mean, the shed we moved from the park, you know, yeah, I don't, I understand it's a short-term thing, but. It should be a regular building that should be able to house. What you mean, yeah, uh, okay, not just passport.
There was a D E C letter that actually spells that out. They wanted to see.
Geez, exactly because it's logical.
They wanna say, well, they wanna see a desk, a chair, uh, a hooter, a light bulb.
Wow, they want an office down there.
A lock on it, yeah.
But it should be.
That's what it should be.
I I agree, I agree. I think we.
With this right now, we'll sort of emergency.
Yeah, build it.
Put together, but to make this work longer, I, we need to spend money to to to.
Yeah, money. So I I think, uh, we get a payment plan. Uh, you'll see that I've, um, attached a draft letter to. Uh, controller to Napoli explaining the situation. Um, because right now, if we're gonna probably end the year. Four, five hundred thousand dollars in debt, which would be a major red flag for the controller. But we will have, no, not going to four hundred thousand, not, we'll end up, um, three, four hundred thousand. But we have three hundred and eighty-three that we know is coming.
Yeah.
So, um, you can read that draft letter, um, but, uh, I'll, I'll send that. Late December, once we have the solid numbers. Um, but can can I get a motion to approve the bit? Or, or like, uh, I mean, no, I need further discussion. Um, yeah, sure, sure.
So where?
Yeah.
Uh, is that okay or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and. Yeah. Can you, what, so the the construction is finished or it's still?
The construction is finished with D E C sign up.
So did we get a final? So do we have final number?
No, I just said that we are still.
Oh, no, but it come for for the contractor. What, who was it?
Uh, Mc McGregor. He is still, his bill is one, McCaff, McCaff, McGregor's the. Lightbulb, excuse me, sorry, McCaff. He has yet to submit his second bill. We paid, uh, one-third of the cost. Uh, we still have, uh, some outstanding bills that just arrived today from, um, some soil companies. And we are calculating the highway department charges, just double checking that. So we will have, uh, final numbers, uh, very shortly. Uh, I've done a preliminary based on, you know, what we think and.
This is for the the sheds.
Yeah, but this is, but I guess, uh, what I'm asking tonight is to, knowing that, uh, we're gonna be an estimated. Uh, twenty or thirty thousand dollars in the head to still go ahead with this venture.
Yeah, for the sheds.
For the sheds because of the long-term implications and value.
Right.
Uh, also, uh, as I said, we should be able to have a surplus of about fifteen thousand dollars a year. To pay off. Which would mean we could pay off within two years. Barring any, yeah, ish, yeah, barring any, yeah, exactly. So I mean, that's kind of the lay of the land. I, and again. Kind of the lay of the land, I, and again, we just didn't have the.
This is basically for just installation and a sink.
When did the CAG finish?
Uh, they finished a week ago.
Uh.
A little bit more than a week ago.
And then the highway department. Yeah.
Last week, so we finished on Tuesday.
Yeah, we did have a little, um.
Weather.
Weather, yeah, but, uh, uh, another little added expense because we missed the germination season, so everything.
But that was required by D E C.
Yeah, any additional expenses were D E C driven that, cause we.
Gonna need to reseed again in spring.
No, you know, they, uh, they got that, uh.
It's called, no, it, uh, they they seeded in mulch like their contract said.
Yeah.
But we put down a, uh, erosion control blanket.
Right, which is just hay glued to.
It's not glued, it's actually like, it's like a fishing twine type of.
Okay.
And it's all weaved together, so it's, you get this hay.
Yeah, it looks.
Like a hay really thin, and what it does, it holds down everything that's.
Right, I know. Next twenty four.
Well, we're not gonna be frolicking through that.
That open field was just insane, just was.
And there was that major windstorm that.
Yeah.
Didn't happen, that you got that down, like literally.
But the the storms, the smaller windstorms actually, cause we had reseeded or re-mulched the top of it because it just blew everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But McCag didn't point out any overages.
Uh, McCag itself did not, there were some overages in material and, uh, the D E C. Demanded requested, uh, engineer on site, uh, more than we had thought and.
Was just underestimated and they wanted to do it right, so.
Yeah. Right.
What he needed, we.
We did.
We hold it good, and again, that.
And that engineer did a final inspection then.
The D E C did, yes, and the engineer, yeah, and the engineer still has to sign that, but we haven't gotten that.
We haven't got the paperwork.
Paperwork, yeah, but it was, uh, George from C P L, James from the D E C, I was there briefly, you were. George McCag was there, walked the entire site and, um, glowing reviews from the D E C, so.
Yeah, we'll get the final product in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, so.
I mean, this was, this was the record timing and everything worked out except for deceiving.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that went wrong with the whole project.
Well.
It didn't go wrong, but you know, it'll come up in the spring, but we just had to add, that fabric wasn't. Four, four thousand dollars for that, all that, power that whole, believe me, it was monotonous.
I went out there, yeah, you're getting much.
Feet rolls by a hundred and twelve, but then you had to put a lot of staples.
But we'll have a complete record of it, so.
Yeah.
Have a complete record of the whole product.
But, yeah, I I don't think. I don't think we could have made that germination season, even under the best of circumstances, even with two weeks or, you know, I think it happened as. Fast as these things happen, I mean, way faster than it normally.
It's not a bad, they're gonna have that. Uh, work down anywhere.
Yeah, I know, it's just.
Sucked up by a lawnmower.
Okay, check out a motion to, uh, I mean, all in favor, okay. Okay, guys, thank you, I I'll get this done, uh, he'll get it done quick, okay, the next is the, uh. Uh, motion to approve the cable television agreement between. I went over that, yeah, that we're not, that's, uh, strictly a draft, we'll have raw numbers, uh, in the December meeting. Uh, resolution to approve the cable television agreement between Spectrum Northeast and the town of Hillsdale, can I get a motion, please? I get a second, Steve, um, uh, I can say that, uh, Ken has reviewed this, this is a, uh. He said it was a very standard agreement, uh, we could put, you know. Motion to approve, I mean, uh, all in favor, sorry, gotta get my. Okay, relocation of light poles, obviously, we've been delayed, um, but, uh, he was, he had held up on another project. Uh, there was some, thank you, Rabina, for finding, uh, this template for the bases. Uh, he says he can work as long as there's not major snow, he's, he can do this, so, uh, we're hoping. Well, now here comes Thanksgiving, but we're hoping, uh, next week that this will start, so stay tuned.
So one question.
Yeah, sure.
Are they gonna disappear before reeds season?
Yeah, I don't think we'll be able to put the reeds, we'll be able to put the reeds up with these seven.
Okay, next week.
Yeah, so you're probably only gonna do seven, I would think, yeah, waste your time, oh, we have these beautiful reeds, but. And maybe they'll be up in time.
I agree.
I'm sorry? Yeah, okay, all right, uh, West End Bridge, can I get a motion to authorize the supervisor to open a new bank account? Specifically for the West End Bridge project and transfer two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars from the general fund. To for the design phase of the construction, can I get a motion? Or can I get a second, Steve? Okay, um, let me give it some context here, um. Where to start, um, the West End Bridge is, we we signed the contract, Ken has reviewed, it's been fully executed, which means they can start work. Uh, the design phase is two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. Now, the plan is, was, and still is, to to get a ban, a, um. A temporary, uh, loan, um, to cover the one. Million and eighty four thousand dollars, eighty four hundred thousand dollars, one zero eight four zero zero, whatever that is. So we can have that money available while we wait for reimbursement from the New York State, however. We cannot do that until we do a seeker, however, we can't do a seeker until we have a design. So we are going to fund the design phase. From our general fund, get the design, do a full seeker. Go for the ban and then we'll see how much money we, I doubt will be reimbursed anything by that point, but anyway, get a new. Figure for the ban and put the money all into this new bank account, so we can keep. Track and not intermingled funds. Does that make sense, everybody? Okay, it was a long road to get there, but we finally figured it out. Uh, uh, the, um. Yeah, uh, we're going to have, uh, myself and the, uh, deputy supervisor. And the town clerk is signee, so we can all make, uh, deposits, yeah. Uh, and all in favor. Okay, thank you, they actually informed, uh, me today and I sent it to clerks that they will start. Scoping the site soon, doing their environment.
That's our steel project.
Yeah, so, uh, this, this is good, um. Okay, I can I get a resolution to approve the C P L bid for services for van shell construction? Everyone can, and, okay, um, discussion, please.
Yeah, so I know this is bid out, but I raised this issue a few times, but I think the original plan. Uh, that was done by Chasen.
Chasen.
Was it? Yeah, and it showed, on that plan, it showed, um. Like, um. Um, what do you say, like small ponds or, you know, places for water to go? So I think that there was a water issue, or was there a water issue, surface water?
That will be addressed to in their services, they'll be scoping out this ban shell and.
But we largely address, but thanks to the hazard department, the whole drainage issue.
Yeah, but they're good, there there's still, that will be part of the the scoping and the the engineering for the ban shell will be the drainage, there's also. Drainage issue in front of the, um, playground equipment, but he will be as part of this, um. And the potential new parking and the, um, charging stations. Uh, scoping that out also, so this is just the basic. Engineering, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, it's not in reference to the bid itself, I'm asking this question, like, so, so. Where, what is, what is that scope of work? Are our town engineer or?
Yes, yes.
Because it's, uh, a curtain drain or something was dug, right, and it's, or.
Right.
It's a drain all the way around the.
Underdrain.
Yeah, okay, you're right, and, uh, but that's like a temporary solution, or?
For the solution to.
Pretty dry during the car show.
Well, the, there's two drainage, the the one that was put in by you. At the behest of the D O T that took all the water coming down of the twenty three, took it.
Yeah, down the.
Yeah, it's been.
Third years.
And then off to Maple, doesn't.
All we did, I fear was the under drainage for that.
Right, right, so, but this, but, you know, uh, C P L will be determining where to put the concrete and and how to do the concrete and they'll be. Analyzing all that.
It's just gonna be a pad though, right?
Yeah, 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 also. An access road.
So the drain, the the roof drainage and all that stuff can go into the drains that's in the ground.
Yeah, but this is part of, that's C P L.
Yeah, and I think the the plan, obviously, there's more impervious surface on the plan.
What we're doing now, since we didn't get funding for the entire park, we're doing piece by piece. Well, I do believe what, and this is just the fan stand and access to it for.
Right, yeah, I understand that, I'm not really in reference to this specific project, what I'm saying is. What I brought up before is that there may be some. Uh, water mitigation that should be planned for before we invest in infrastructure like a hundred thousand dollar dam shell. Or anything else on the site.
Absolutely, and this is what C P I would be with.
Okay.
This will be part of, uh, their scoping and engineering for the.
Before this, before this is executed.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
This is.
Yeah.
This is preliminary for doing anything, this is just having them look at and tell us how to approach.
Right, and making sure there's no issues with the place. Yeah.
Uh huh.
Yeah, in fact, one of the, he went down with the the co-banking was very concerned about a particular water thing, you know, it's like. But, you know, we'll be, I will, we'll definitely be keeping you posted, uh, I don't know when they're gonna start on this. By whether dependent, and it's, you know, we're not starting construction anytime soon, but. There's still lots of, uh, things that need to happen.
And then C P L, sorry, and the, what, so wasn't there supposed to be a kit? Were the.
The van shell is a kit.
Yeah.
We're not even near that state here.
Well, we're getting close to.
Getting pricing information from three different suppliers and it's, um.
Yeah.
It's just very preliminary now, just the setup, the procedure, do anything there is in C P L.
Right, yeah, but part of the, or will be presenting choices to the board. And to the public, actually.
Cause this is like, the scope is like a two hundred amp underground service, I just wonder if this shouldn't be. Done in parallel to other infrastructure that's like for the site.
We will definitely be talking about long term, uh, feasibility of any other projects for the park, um. Now, this is get us started.
Yeah, what I mean is like, it may be, we might want to put these together to save some money, because this is twelve thousand dollars to. I don't really understand, like, to, to run electric to the. To plan to run electric to the site?
Well, that's one piece, it was also where the road goes, where the parking goes, where the actual van shell goes. You know, the requirements for drainage.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood, so this is for the entire park, not.
This is for the van shop.
Van shell and the access to it and associated part, parking and electric needs.
Yeah.
We're not doing, we're not.
Oh, okay, so, so this is for, sorry, sorry, I'm just trying to, so this is for. C P L to create a plan, uh, for the park.
No, for the.
For the segment of the park.
This, the Chasten plan was never supposed to be debatable, that was just an overreaching.
Right.
So now we're individual, actual engineered projects, which is why we need the engineering firm to to this work.
Right, and they'll be checking the drainage and any erosion control that will be needed, any issues will be brought up. Uh, during this process and we can, you know, we will always be keeping an eye on the overall plan for the park, but since we have to break it down. This is, uh, the starting phase.
Yeah, I just, I I really think we already have the hundred thousand dollar bus for. At at least one other project, so we have, I mean, we have a hundred thousand dollars for the fast charger.
Yeah, and we have a hundred thousand dollars for the.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, this scope of work should combine both of those, otherwise, we're gonna be spending. It seems like we're gonna be spending twelve thousand dollars here and.
Right.
You know, it won't, it won't anticipate that project, which, which I have said requires like us to select a contractor. Right, because the contractor actually provides the scoping.
Well, we, they are preparing site and electrical plan, so we will be, you know, incorporating. Uh, the electric for the park.
Right, but that's like, that's like a service that you put on a barn, I mean. We're talking about like major, like, kind of like, big, big electrical infrastructure.
Well.
So I just, I just think it would be in the, to save money, it might be in the interest to combine these two. And what other, other.
This is our town engineer, so they're gonna give us, you know, uh, totally take that into consideration, if they've done electrical work. And have scoped out the electric in the park, they're not gonna charge us again to do the same thing for this next project. They're gonna do the groundwork, charge it here and then I go back, and we can go back and save.
The the reason why I'm bringing this up is because the fast charger requires a specific service and like specific infrastructure to the site that you're. The dam shell is is not going to require.
Okay.
So. Um, so I think that the engineering firms should be aware of this. Big infrastructure when planning for these smaller.
Mm hmm.
Um, subsidiary, first, electrical infrastructure.
No, I I agree, and the, this is not the the ideal situation where we got the overall grant and could lump everything together, but I think it's important. Uh, that we start, uh, because this has been delayed and I know, uh. We've worked very hard to get to this point, it's been over a decade, so I I don't want to delay. Uh, uh, the C P L has been very cognizant of the overall nature of this park and. Uh, in in working with the town and giving us prices of. Keeping the overall nature and work applicable to other projects.
Mm hmm.
So, uh, I'm totally comfortable with this price and this, then you also many?
I'm good, I'm good.
No, I think every saying, Jamie, that, but it leave me work.
Just that the scope of work is electrical, so it just, I don't know, it just seems most of them, I don't. I don't understand really why, what we're firing an engineering firm to do. Honest, honestly, I'm not trying to delay anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't really understand. Can charge twelve thousand dollars to run, uh, a service.
Not much more than that, they're gonna plan where this is the proper site to for.
There's gonna be an erosion sediment control plant prepared, along the inside, the access for additional parking stalls will be provided and vegetative screening. Will be proposed to create a visual banner between the park and the neighboring parcel to the west, so they're doing new parking, they're doing the van shell, they're doing the concrete, they're doing. Uh, a drainage evaluation.
Okay, well, sit, again, like, since it's electrical, it's electrical, sub, subdraining, electrical and parking. We should definitely include the the charger in this, otherwise, we might be digging up. Parking spaces or whatever else.
From what I understand, the parking is for dropping off and picking up.
Parking is on the west side of the the park, the 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 stations. The charging stations, I imagine, will be on the north side of the park.
Yeah, right, so the charging stations, that is, we don't know the exact location.
Mm hmm.
That that has to be determined by the contractor we choose and the New York Power, the N I S A, so I just.
There's only two avenues, you missed there, it's only, I mean, funny, it's coming from.
Well, it was certainly be part of the discussions with C P L.
Yeah, the reason why that isn't, you know, the reason why that is not the bid is because we, I was told to wait. For a park plan and now.
Right, and we need to, that that engineer. Yeah.
So we were.
Would it put behind that, more, cause I agree with Jamie, only because of doing it a couple of times, yeah. I know, I don't, that's somebody I would do, I do agree with her here because what would it, would it, what would it be? What would it put your project behind to ask C P L to combine this?
With the place of it.
You know, that it, for another month, to to say. You know, that it, for another month to to say, because I see what she's saying with digging up and and, you know, doing the whole thing. So CPL can come back to next month.
You know, these parking spaces for charging require certain pads.
Right.
So like, you can't just like, put those pads anywhere.
Right, but.
And you can't just like dig those up.
When you say you sense go, you don't know where the park would go because that depends on NICE and some other factor.
Because, no, so.
So, so CPL can't figure that out if my site hasn't way in.
No, no, no. So the reason why we haven't gone to RFP for that is because I was told. That we were waiting for a park plan from you guys. I mean, I was basically waiting with this hundred thousand dollar grant. For you guys to present a park plan.
Well, we did present it three years ago. The problem is we didn't get it funded, so we're breaking it in pieces that we can have it fund.
Okay, this is more reasons.
Though is that this, the grant was not, didn't exist at that point.
When did we get the grant?
In our first year.
So, what I can do is go back to CPL and say, we would like to incorporate the placement of two uh, fast.
Fast chargers.
Fast chargers in with the parking and uh, please reevaluate this and include that. And we can discuss it next month.
Right.
I don't think, personally, I don't think the fast charging station should be anywhere near the ban shell.
No.
Or somewhere else.
But it's the parking.
It's gotta be within the parking areas of the, of the.
Right.
It's irrelevant. It's that the CPL is not gonna determine where the fast charger goes. It's actually the co, the contractor that has that.
So the word I asked in CPL.
So now this ward needs to tell me to to, to share with you um, an RFP for our next meeting. So that we can get this going.
Okay.
That we can have a contractor work with the, work with NICE and determine what, you know, determine the options for where these can actually go.
Talked to NICE directly.
I mean, that's what we did. It's not, but I've tried. It's not the process. The contractor has to.
That's what we did with this one. I know it's not a fast charger.
It's not a fa, it's it's different.
No, I know it is, but we, we went with NICE first to find out. We have limited sources.
It's, I've tried many times. It's uh, this.
Originally, we tried the helmet path, but they said no.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so let me talk to George and we'll come back uh, next month.
Well, it's just, no, 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 it's just, it might not be the material that CPL chooses. For a product like this, it may cost.
Uh, no, we're gonna uh, uh, table.
Usually it's paint. I mean, usually it's either cement, uh, poured cement.
Okay, so we're gonna move on. We're gonna move on. Uh, we're going to, uh, what's the term?
Table.
Table. Uh, okay, so the Anthony's uh, Coldwater Street Sidewalk Project. Okay, so uh, the TAP. Funding was announced this week, I believe, uh, ninety-seven million available. Uh, due date is March twelfth. Which is actually good because the last time we went for this, it was uh, January twelfth. Uh, so it does buy us a couple months. Uh, we do get points. I know that the. Grant is essentially already written. It needs to be updated with some uh, easements and and stuff like that, hopefully. To make it stronger, but uh, we will get points in the grant awarding process. If the grant writing services are put out for an RFQ, so can I get a resolution to approve the. Excuse me, RFQ for grant writing services. Can I get a second? Now, uh, Ravini, you had some, uh.
Yeah.
Erwin and Tiger. You had some modifications, which we can pass with your modification.
Sam spoke to me. The, there's, it's a bit vague, the way they've written it. Um, so we have to come up with just definite dates, so based on the fact we need to do this fairly fast.
Mm hmm.
Um, I was suggesting that we put it out in the newspaper on November twenty-fifth on Bidnet and on the website. Um, and have the uh, RFPs come back or RFQs come back on Wednesday, the tenth of December. Um, and give them five days for asking questions, um. And there's some other things that need to get taken out of it. And then the the responses need to be emailed, mailed, or hand delivered, those are the things.
Okay, what was the due date for that?
Um.
By noon?
Noon on December tenth.
Okay.
It's a Wednesday, so that gives us a few days before the next town board meeting for the committee to meet.
Okay.
To make a recommendation.
Then we can, okay.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Some states.
Yeah, so can I uh, uh, get a motion to approve the posted RFQ with the. Um, change of dates as elaborated by the town clerk. Everyone, okay, does anybody have any discussion?
Yeah, so was this grant um, recommended by CPL?
No, this grant is, well, we were, did did not receive it.
When was it?
Two years ago. It was January twelfth.
But that was when we were.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was literally.
Okay.
January one, we all started and then it's like, oh, we need all these letters for January twelfth. Grant submission that had already essentially been done under the previous supervisor and board. Uh, the poster boards used to live, they're currently in my office now, I'm bringing it back out. Used to live out in town hall here. Um, we did not receive it. We had the consultation with the state saying. Lovely grant application. It's very strong. You should definitely apply in two years. Uh, you should do some work with. Um, permissions and easements. Um, there are three properties where you're essentially, it's the brewery. Where we just slightly encroach on their property and the former map said, you know, easement TBD, so we just have to. Make those more solid. What, probably not, even if we don't get to a full easement, yeah, we can say. Easement agreed upon, easement in the works or whatever they wanna say.
Strictly that.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what needs to happen between now and March. We've written all the landowners and asking for any existing uh, surveys. Uh, there are only, there used to be four properties in question. The fourth property had a stone wall that is now no longer there. Uh, the the major rehab, so that's no longer an issue. So it's the the three properties uh, that we will be.
Right.
Um, looking to elucidate.
Is this a, a Department of State grant?
Um.
I forgot.
It's a uh, uh.
Federal money channel.
DOT.
Federal money, yeah, but, yeah. Yeah, like the bridge grant, yeah.
Same as the sidewalk grant.
Yeah, the previous sidewalk grant. Uh, again, this is key to get people up from the rail trail.
Which we have really emphasized.
Oh, yeah.
In the grammar, yes, which I think was.
It was. I mean, the grant was really well done. It just, we didn't have enough verbiage in there about acquisitions. That was it.
And they didn't give you any feedback about not having a comprehensive plan in place before.
No.
Applying for this one, cause there's a few. I thought it was this one, but maybe it's, maybe it's another acronym. There are a few that they won't grant unless you have an updated.
No, this is one, yeah, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no. All in favor? All right, thank you. So we'll make those changes. Um. And can I get a motion to appoint uh, Erwin as infrastructure head and Rabina and myself to. Do the initial evaluations of the RFQ based on the um, uh, the criteria elicited in the RFQ. Uh, for recommendation at the December town board meeting.
I can't do that.
I'll do it.
Erwin and.
Erwin can't do it.
I can't. Oh, I don't, sorry, Steve and.
Joanna.
Joanna, okay.
She's like.
Forgetting her already.
Further discussion, please. All in favor? Okay, thank you. We will get back to you all. Um. Housing grant, I thought they might be here tonight, but they are not. So they did come back with a application filled out. It's a. Fairly straightforward application. Um, this. Uh, can I get a motion, please, to approve the application to pro housing communities technical assistance to grow tag? What was the other one? Tap. This is tag application for funding. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Joanna, Erwin, okay, um.
It just said earlier.
Oh, sorry, that's getting me.
It's in that.
Um.
No, take them.
So. It's a fairly straightforward application. I know Chris Brown at the um, at the county level helped them out and guided them through this. Uh, this could be money that could be possibly, you know, help us out in zoning and having the planning.
Yeah.
So, um, thank you to Richard Cumber and Ellen Levy for making this happen.
I, I must have misread her attachment. Did, didn't anyone respond to my email when I sent, uh? Cause I didn't, I thought the, the deadline had already passed on the trend.
No, what, what actually Richard Cumber said to them, like, you do know that most towns will not have a board meeting. But the fourth due date, and they said, oh, thank you, Richard, and they extended it a month. So we have Richard Cumber to thank for. For us being able to do this. Yeah, yeah, no, he was really, he was key. Yeah, I know, they extended it.
November twenty-fifth.
Yes.
That was it.
Yeah, so all in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, next. The next trail, two hundred and fiftieth celebration, eleven AM Hillsdale Firehouse. Uh, it's gonna be cosponsored by the, from the county. Um, historical society, uh, uh, actually Holly Tanner, the county clerk is working on this with Bill Better, the county historian. Along with our historians, um, can I get a motion to approve the expenditure of six hundred dollars plus the two hundred dollar refundable deposit? Uh, from the uh, historic committee line for the rental of the Hillsdale Firehouse. Can I get a motion, please?
Sure, I have a motion.
And then Joanna Erwin, um.
Are you gonna get stewards involved? Cause they're all about this.
Yeah, I would love to.
Seriously, I know.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they could do something.
So, so you know, December fourth, there's a celebration or commemoration at Fort Takana DeRoga, December thirteenth, Sarah Toga's having one. Then January ninth, Kinder Hook is having one, January tenth. Hillsdale and Great Barrington are having one, and I assume it'll continue all the way to Boston. It took them until March to get there. Um, so, yay. I mean, so many people be here, probably Dee Dee Barrett, possibly others.
What January tenth gonna be called?
It's gonna be in the firehouse, but there will be oxygen outside, uh, eleven AM.
I'm picking up motion.
Okay, really notice. That'll be the two hundred dollar deposit. You'll be like, you want this back? Get out the shovel. All right, good to know.
We have plenty of yellow shovels today.
Okay, good, um.
Yes, we.
Um, so thank you to the firehouse. Thank you to the store committee, uh, all in favor? Yeah, thanks. Please show up. They're gonna have reenactors, cookies, I don't know. Yeah, it's, it'll be a good start to our.
Is Lauren involved in that?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, next is from our economic development committee. Uh, resolution to approve the expenditure of six hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. For the creation of the, of a Hillsdale banner from the economic development line. Uh, you can read the proposal, Matt White, uh.
Uh, this is for the other end of town.
Yeah.
We did up there.
It's the exact same banner, it's east end of town.
The one I designed.
It's a billboard. Billboard.
Not bad, yeah, it's not bad.
So they're gonna erect a stand.
Where's it going? Do we, did they?
They got it locked down, yeah.
Yeah.
The red building or?
No, I think.
The red reality building?
No, it's further west of that.
Further west.
Yeah.
You have a farm?
No.
Past the farm.
Past the farm, the White House, uh. The Magyar, is it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Magyar house.
Yeah, so people who's done is allocated some. Line for walking to Hillsdale.
And it's gonna be a copy of the one we did at the other end or? We have, I, I have an economic.
Yeah.
I, I was away.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you're in the Bermuda. Uh, I believe.
Wasn't in Bermuda. I was in the Bahamas.
Bahamas, sorry, um. Uh, it's matching the one east of town.
Yeah, okay, matching the one in his people town.
But this will be on a.
Erwin, you'll know, will it say the same thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome to Hillsdale.
Okay.
Yeah.
That one's nice. Stay play. Stay play. That's what says on the other one.
This is.
Eat, pray. Love.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so I, I think when those were erected before, there was some kind of public input that the. There should be a public review of the designs of those signs.
Okay.
If they're being initiate, I mean, if they're being.
That, that sign was put on private property.
Right, but here we're, it's being paid for by, with public money right here. That's what the resolution is saying, right?
Yes.
Right.
So the allocation from the.
Yeah, so I think the public should have an opportunity to. Come, see the design and comment on it before it is. I don't think, although some people may think that sign. Is, looks wonderful. Other people may say the sign doesn't look wonderful. We should give them the opportunity to say that.
Paid for the firm's son.
With the economic development.
So already town money paid for an identical sign, which we're making and putting out to another part of town, so it's not new. The design's not new.
I, I, I don't think everyone in town uh, appreciated the sign, so.
Two ladies were upset about it.
Uh.
Two ladies.
I just remember when I saw that this was, uh.
Yeah. Well, they don't live on that. They don't live there anymore. But I see what you're saying, Jamie, but I mean. Uh, maybe they can make a public announcement with the same poster saying, hey, we're gonna put this one at the other end of town.
I just, I mean, we're, we're like a, a company operating in the public good. We put up signs. I think the public should have the opportunity to comment on kind of what we're, what we're presenting.
I just said, I agree with you.
Yeah.
But how do you wanna do that? It's gonna be the same sign. We're gonna put it on the west side of town.
Okay, just, you know.
Put in the newsletter and then, then put in the newsletter on the agenda in December and see if there's any public comment.
Yeah, make sure people know about it.
Personally, personally, I don't think that sign is going to look very appropriate. At the entry of the town from that direction. I, I don't think.
Whatever.
I love.
Yeah.
I will see what the public says.
You know what? I don't think a lot of things look appropriate at the entry of our town, but it's like.
Is it going on private property or?
Yes.
But we're, the, the town is paying for it, that's.
No, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, well, it sounds like we'll be uh, advertising this and uh, soliciting public comment uh, at the December meeting.
So.
So we are, what's the word again?
Table.
Table.
I mean, personally, when you're coming from Great Barrington, I like it on the side of that old.
I see it.
It looks like it, it looks like it's always been that. And I always call Dana to tell her friend Ian to cut the ivy. Yeah, I cut the ivy. It's good. So it's looking too, too old.
I think the thing is that, that it's, um, it's not a referendum. It's just public input.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it's public. Say about the site.
Absolutely.
But it's, so if somebody says, I don't like that sign and I don't wanna look at it, I'm going in or out of town. What I don't understand is if it's on the Magyar building, I mean, it's like when you're coming down twenty-three, hold on. You see it on the side of Ian's building. It's not facing twenty-three, it's on the side. So how will it be?
Well, that, that's a research we can do between now and December sixteenth. So we'll get more.
Somebody, the public's gonna wanna know.
Yeah, no, we can have that information. Okay, great, thank you. Uh, okay. Yes, uh, resolution to.
Okay, let me, let me just read the motion.
Yes, please. Steve has.
Change the motion. Okay, so and and then we'll discuss it. As per collective bargaining agreement, the town is obligated to ensure. A qualified retiree who meets the negotiated standards. When the qualified retiree reaches the age of sixty-five. The retiree's primary insurance will be Medicare and the supplemental insurance will be United Healthcare. Okay, that's the motion. And, uh, well, somebody.
I'll, I'll, no, I'll motion and do the second one. Okay, so further discussion.
So the discussion is the following. We, we have one person who qualifies at this time, uh, to get retiring insurance. In the collective bargaining agreement right here, it says, in addition, healthcare insurance coverage will be continued for all employees. Who were hired before nineteen ninety-six and who retired after working at least twenty years for the town and are at least fifty-five. Retired employees covered under the insurance plan must go on Medicare A and B at sixty-five. So we have one person that does it. The person is currently on the CDHP uh, insurance brand that all the highway departments is on. And now that they reach sixty-five, that Medicare becomes their primary, and now we're gonna get them supplemental insurance. So this will save the town like six to seven thousand dollars. Now, just uh, per year. Just so you, we had a meeting here yesterday. Uh, Rabina, myself, Mike was on the phone, our two insurance agents. And the retiree and his spouse, we went over every single thing that is covered by the insurance now. To make certain that it will be covered by this insurance that we offered him. He went home, he did all the homework. And it's all good. So it says right here in our handbook that the town board must vote on any. On any change or discontinuation of insurance.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not discontinuing, uh, we are just changing that insurance, so.
It's comparable, if not better.
You always have to stay comparable or better, and in most cases, it's better, sometimes it's comparable, everything is covered.
Yeah.
The whole thing.
They really.
And to be honest.
To their credit, they really.
Yeah, yeah, the insur, the insurance people were fantastic, I mean, to be honest with you, we could have done whatever we wanted. You, you know, we didn't have to meet with anybody, we could have found the crap, but we don't do that, so anyway, that's, if you have any questions, I could answer.
There was an A A R P element involved?
You have to be a member of A A R P to get this, United Healthcare, it's, it's an eighteen dollars, there were already members.
Oh, good.
So it's, so it's all, but there is a timeline, that's why we wanted it quickly, December seventh is the closing of the winter, win, winter, window. To change the insurance.
Okay, you're taking the same stuff? Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So it's, it's those Malamas, so it's, it, it's all set, you know, he signed the papers, we just got through.
I mean, it sounds like a win-win, and thank you to the insurance agent, but thank you for you for catching this, because it's a significant saving.
And there, there's only one other person in Hillsdale who would be impacted at some point by this. Okay, so we need to vote, yeah.
Any other further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you to all. Uh, next up is the solar panels, uh, Jamie, do you have any update or thoughts, or? Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, Rabina, did you receive anything today?
I received a call, uh, is it yesterday or the day before?
Oh, from, yeah, and I can't talk to it, well, because I have no other reference, so, so. Here's my update.
Okay.
I didn't receive any other bids or any other estimates.
Okay.
Uh, but some, um, the original S, um, contractor who gave the initial estimate. Called, contacted me again today, said that he was submitting something today before this meeting. I said, you have to submit it.
Oh, this is the guy that put that there?
Yeah, you know, this is, uh.
Oh, no, this is.
His name is J, uh, Hudson.
Something, yes.
Oh.
Solar.
Interesting to go on.
He also told, yeah, but this has been, this has been going on even.
Okay, I'm sorry, getting confused between Clemens twenty twenty five and.
Hudson called and asked for the paperwork.
Hudson is twenty twenty three, the original solar panels, okay, I'm sorry, but I keep.
So, they originally said that they were going to provide a response to Rabina during the bidding, no, during the bidding.
Okay, alright.
They did the same this month. Uh, I spoke to him even today, he said he was still submitting it today, I didn't receive it to my email. And I said, you know, last chance, I have to speak to, if, if there's a chance you can do it, I have to speak to my board about it tonight.
Sure.
And then, um, he also said that he has the panels in stock, so I'm like. And these, remember, there was a supply issue with these panels, because no one else can stack them, so.
I would be more, if, if something does come through, look, it's Thanksgiving and I'm. Blah, 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 but we can always, with two days' notice, if a potentially lower bid, easier bid comes through. I think we could gather a quorum and do this, so I think it's worth waiting to hear.
Well, to, uh, so.
I, I think the communication has been crazy.
Yeah, obviously, yeah, 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 yes.
So, it really is absurd, because Clemens calls like every day.
Yeah, they've been consistent, and I haven't spoken to him because I have no other.
Nothing.
Bid to see, to see.
Okay.
So. As the bid. Season closed, it's done, that whole first bid is done.
Right.
So. I think you have to turn down. His bid and open it again, open it up again for more bidding.
Uh, no, according to Ken, we can go out and solicit, yeah, we don't not, not have to go out to the big process again.
Go out and get three bids somehow and document.
Right, or.
Or prove good faith, that is, yeah.
So we, we have that, but the.
But we don't have any money out to it, do we, from Hudson?
No, 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 we don't, we don't have the bids, we just have, uh. No, you, we have a process of me reaching out to other, uh, contractors over the last month. But what we don't have isn't an alternative bid, so we can't even go to Clemens and say, well, can you meet us somewhere? And, and we also don't have, we don't have the panels that are gonna match the panels on the.
Okay.
Which this guy apparently has, and. So do we wait one more day, do I call him again tomorrow morning and?
Yeah, I think we.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's a possibility here.
Yeah, I have no idea why they have not followed up for this time, I have, yeah.
Right, stuff happens, um, yeah, stuff happens, so, um, let's, uh, again, if we. There does need to be a special two-day notice meeting to, to get this done, if this does come through, I think it's worth waiting, so let's, um, I know.
Table.
Clemens will call again, but.
If it's ten thousand dollars in the same, if it's ten thousand dollars difference in the same spec as the roof, then it's.
Yeah, absolutely, so, okay, keep us posted.
Table.
Table, uh, Rojan Park. Um.
They get the, uh, kiosks out of the barn?
No, but they visited, measured, and these are the, um, rail trail kiosks that have been there for a decade. They have spots for them.
Happy when I got the message.
Yeah, 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 they, they viewed, measured, and said, we know where these will go.
When they didn't take them?
No, well, they didn't have the, they were heavy, but, um. The, all signs are good.
They're made to be outside.
Oh, I know.
Get them out of the barn.
Uh, absolutely, absolutely.
So what, when's the new date?
I'll call Lisa, the, we'll call Lisa to listen and say, you know, look, it's winter now, so I don't know, they'll be installed this before winter. Get the, post it in the ground and all that stuff, but they want to get them out as much as we do. Yeah, um, we did talk to Scott Decker about going down and just getting, you know, a, a needs assessment. Future grants, and so we know.
I think we should get other opinions too.
Yeah, other opinions, yeah, um, but there's some good news that you might wanna rely.
Hmm, oh, more money.
Yeah, there was a, a.
Substantial amount of money donated.
To the H R B T, we.
Ten thousand.
Which is matching to the H R B T, which I think was.
No, we need twenty five, so we need.
No, no, but we now have, that ten thousand is actually twenty thousand, because H R B T will match that ten thousand.
That was fifty thousand, or they say twenty five.
It's twenty five, this year and twenty five the next year, but every dollar is matched.
Right.
And so, there's at least ten thousand dollars that we have, I think there's probably.
Seven hundred.
Yeah.
Additional.
So we're building towards a full match.
Right, and then we could send, uh, Dan Jameson a letter over at Greenway.
Okay, yeah.
This week.
Okay, I'm around, so I've got. Sorry.
Are you around tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, we just gotta tweak the last letter.
Okay. This is a grant application for her?
Um, I'm gonna start with a letter. Because I have a relationship with him, and see what he says. Cause, yeah, you have to get a code and sign in, blah, blah, blah.
We also, I think I'll hint you on our, on our side, because that.
I, I know, I was here when she said that, and, and I think this is the person. That she was talking about.
Okay, so you'll report back in December of your progress.
Boy, you're gonna help me tweak the letter and send it, then you'll know the progress and I'll be gone.
No, you won't, you'll be here in December. My explanation is we can start spending, it's funny, we can spend, uh, like seventeen hundred dollars, seventeen thousand, because, no, it's a ten thousand. Well, no, we have to contact H R D, we need one now and say. They did, they did indicate that we didn't have to raise the full twenty five. Right. Spend first part.
We don't need any money right now, no.
No. Well, we, it's winter, we're not gonna do any major.
I mean, that's whoever's running, yeah, this money will be in an account for whoever's gonna run the park. And, and, and manage it next, but, um. I would tell that person to keep raising money, because that you go through that money fast, so if you have to fix the roof of the farmhouse. That sixty grand gone, and currently, what do we have in there, like?
Yeah, seventeen.
Seventy.
Yeah, but, uh, we do have this grant.
Yeah. I would, I would get it, I would get it all. Before you spend any of it, because like I said, it goes.
Well, that's great news, that's great, I think it probably was, yeah.
And I think, I think, you know, going forward, um. For next year, Emily and Rabina got the youth program down, they know what's going on, they know how to deal with what's his name over there at the county. Dan, what's his name?
Brad and Eddie.
Yes, that character, and, um, I don't know if you wanna like, talk to the farmer's market.
I met with Meg, we went over some things, yeah.
Meg McCann?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, what, what she's saying, she, what is she, she doesn't do it.
No, but it was about things that she can, she doesn't handle, like for her fucking.
When does that agreement expire with the farmer's market?
Uh, we just signed one with that this past year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, every year we renew it and talk to them, so.
Yeah.
I advise the board to maybe basically.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Maybe does, it, yeah, yeah.
It's easy for departing board members to say.
What?
Easy for departing board members to say, no, they do great, it's a great, beloved.
Yeah.
Institution now, so, yay.
And then, and then, there's, um, still dog issues down there.
Really?
I would just say, I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard, the signs are, everyone comments on the signs.
What?
Even walk down there, unbelievable that people won't pick up after they talk.
Oh, no.
Horrible.
Well, I went down.
Especially when they. Cracked like goddamn horses.
Somebody told me that somebody was cutting trees down in the park, so I did leave the house and go down there, and it was these ladies. Who were planning a wedding that I know about in the woods, up near the picnic tables, and they were just clearing. Brush, and I was like, what's going on, and they're like, oh, hey, Joanna, we're having a wedding here this Saturday. And I said, okay, I don't know about this, and, and Bill's like, oh, yeah, they're just, they're just gonna get married in the park. And I was like, okay, but.
It's a public park.
Yeah, it's a public park, that's cool, and they go, and we're just cleaning up this area, so they're down there with like, uh. Chainsaws, you know.
So what's with their pool, long weeks?
They're resourceful lesbians down there. And I was like, this is great, okay, have, have a ball, and then I had a wedding down there, but, um. We should know about that stuff, you know, because like, that's insurance if somebody's down there operating that.
Burning chainsaws. No.
Well, nobody called me until it was happening, so it's.
You should have got the change, I think it's a plan.
And even though it's brushing, it's wild, it's on a trail, I was like, uh, they're like, oh, we told Megan. It's like, okay.
I didn't dare say anything, I couldn't say a word.
Um.
That's it, right?
Yeah, uh, any other business before the town? Uh, I wanna mention our next meeting is Tuesday, December sixteenth, I do have. Monday, December twenty ninth at noon on hold, it's highly unlikely we would need it, this is. Remember last year, we had the ARCA funds that were expiring at December thirty first, December thirty first. Sometimes there's something financial that, you know, I know the county always has a meeting on December thirtieth.